Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for Monday, August the 8th. If we could have a roll call please to establish form.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Mickey Snyder.
Here.
Terry McLung.
Here.
Kristy Kendrick.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
We have six.
All right, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, get a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I have one item, we opened up the bids on White Street, so I'd like to make that announcement under item new, under the new business, and if it's okay, I'd say the person with the bids here, so if we move that to number one, under new business.
Great.
Okay.
Great, great, great.
Anything else? All right, motion to approve the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Does everybody read, and any approval, any amendments? All those in favor of the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And so moved. I believe that you may have an application by Ann Sally for the planning commission. If you would, that's for position one, her application's in there, and if you would like to give her a call and talk to her, we can bring that up at the next meeting. She lives over on Elk Street, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm Karen Lindblad, I've lived here since 1976 and had a business in town. It seems that all this council can think is to increase and increase taxes. Citizens are expected to live within their means and budgets, but not this city. The city budget keeps going, getting bigger and bigger, and the solution is to fix it, is to just increase taxes. I suggest that the mayor and the council work on decreasing the city's budget and get the city to live within its means. We cannot afford to further increase taxes, especially on retail. Retail is having a hard time right now. Our taxes are already high compared to the places where our visitors live. They're not coming here with pockets full of money because they have budgets that they have to live within. They must eat and they must stay, but they don't have to buy anything, and a lot of them aren't. And by anything, I mean anything extra. And a lot of people aren't staying, which is obvious, because our food taxes are above our lodging taxes right now, so a lot of people are just day tripping. Talk to retailers here, and you will find that sales are down. Food prices have gone up, so taxes from food is up, but not retail or lodging. Our main industry is tourism, so why does the city keep increasing taxes? Make no mistake, people notice tax amounts that they are paying. And that's true, because I've talked to retailers since I was on council years ago, that people will come up with an item, and they're perfectly happy to pay that price, but once you put the tax on it, they will often back off. They don't want to feel fleeced, and neither do locals. Because of our high taxes, even locals have cut back on eating out and buying and shopping locally because of our, because of our current taxes without adding any more. The city has increased taxes in the past for water and sewer, and we have seen little improvement. I suggest that the city tighten its belt and find other ways, many of which have been pointed out by citizens in previous weeks, and find other solutions besides constantly increasing taxes. Tourism is the goose that lays the golden egg here, and higher taxes are going to kill it. I would ask this council to not pass this 1% tax, because we don't need any more taxes than we already have. I talked to people all weekend, and when I mentioned it to them that our taxes were going to increase here, they were shocked, because the taxes that we already have are higher than where they live. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, that's the end of the public comments. I get a motion to discuss the White Street station sealed bids.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we had, at 2:00 this afternoon, we were, had the bids, we had one bid from Dick Titus, and it was for $51,500 for the property. And I guess it's up to the council now to decide if they want to accept that bid or not.
Say what the appraisal was. What are you doing, sorry?
Motion to approve and accept the offer to purchase.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Cincy's here, let's see if we can squeeze some more money out of him.
I already tried that.
Do we have to do an ordinance now to sell to him? We don't do any?
No, we'll have to, I don't know what we'll have to do. Mr. Weaver, we need any resolution or anything to, or just?
I'll look at it, but I don't think so. We'll need a deed.
Just all we need is a quitclaim deed, and I think with the council's approval, then we can go ahead and get this done, and get it over to him, and then go from there. So, any further discussion?
Possession.
Take pardon?
At possession.
Oh, that's extra money. At closing, yeah.
It's going to come out.
Yeah, we'll let you, we'll work on it, yeah. All right, all those in favor of accepting the bid of $51,500 from Dick and Zeke signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, you're proud on it.
Can I have a minute?
Yes, sir.
How many years has it been now?
28 years.
Oh, God.
I offered Kurt Jordan $20,000 for it 28 years ago, y'all should have taken it. But I wanted to give a heartfelt thanks, Zeke and I both do, to the city council, to the fire department, to the staff, Ann and Kim and Butch and all the people, the fire chief, our ex-chief Randy Yates, all worked very hard to bring this about. And it's such a small thing to the city, but it's a big thing to me. Especially want to thank Mickey for, and Terry for sponsoring the ordinance, or the proposal to sell it. And especially Terry, the night that Joyce Zeller's death was announced, y'all took a break and came back, you stayed focused, and you got the agenda done, and you got this approved, when everything could have fallen apart, and I really appreciate that. So, I'm now on a fire station. I guess I'm going to have to get me a fire outfit. We can sell you a truck, too. Yes, sure, thanks. And to the love of my life, Zeke Taylor, who gave me $10,000 for my birthday, so I could buy the fire station, the cheapskate was going to give me an iPad, and I talked about it, so.
We are being televised.
But anyway, thank you, and to all the people that looked at the station and thought about bidding on it, I hope you get a better property for less money. I really appreciate the fact that I got to bid on it and got the station, so all's well that ends well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you've been very patient.
I think you've been patient.
All right, all right, now we're back on to our regular business of 2015 budget cleanup resolution, get a motion to discuss.
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
All right.
Is it in here?
Lonnie?
There it is.
Would you come up here for a moment, please, sir?
Okay.
Yes, it's the Fed head, it's a resolution, so it's name only.
I think I had the, knew the answer.
No, she reads it all.
No, just the cover sheet.
What we have is basically the same format that we've had before, and what was in the original budget that we had. The question I think Mr. McLung had was under the reserve revenues for debt service. Isn't that, Mr. McLung?
Yeah, Lonnie, it was the line 40 under revenues, it's debt service, but that's actually, what, tax revenues, and it's not specifically, I mean, it says debt service, and debt service is usually a debit, not a credit.
Right, and?
It's not an income, it's in itself, and that's all.
Let me pull over there just a second, and look at it.
Now, I know there's, you have it as a page back in here, and there is a breakdown on it.
There is.
Bob pointed that out to me.
Right, the majority of it is sales tax revenue.
Yes.
And so, and that, excuse me, goes primarily to, is pledged on a bond, and that sales tax goes to Bank Corp. South, and then they take out the bond payment, and withhold it in escrow, and then they send us the rest.
Then my other, my other question was, there's nothing in these ever that reflects what we had to draw from reserves?
Not directly, no.
Yeah, that's kind of like a balance statement, there's not anything that shows that.
Not here. What this, what this is, is this is, shows, of course, what we budgeted for revenue and expense, and then what it actually was, and we're just adjusting the budget, and it's to reflect the actual.
Right.
So.
Just, just offhand, what was our deficit that we had to pull out of reserve?
Total, I think it was about, in the neighborhood of $500,000, I believe, for everything. Mr. Mitchell?
Where does the, when we're billing for the ambulance department and we have bad debt, where's that coming in at?
It doesn't show up here at all, because we're on a strict cash basis, so unless we receive funds.
Okay, so it just doesn't show anywhere?
It doesn't show here.
Well, good idea.
True, yeah.
Thanks.
Well, that's, that's just the accounting method of the city, is cash basis.
In that case, it works in our favor, thank you. Okay, the, the negative $547,000 here, is that coming out of reserve account?
Yes, it is.
And then, there were also, was a $300,000 loan to, of the clerks, correct?
Well, there was, but that, as we talked earlier today, that's, that's evolves and is reflected in that amount.
Pardon?
That's generally reflected in that amount.
So it's not?
It's not addition.
$850,000.
No, correct, it's not addition.
Okay, all right.
I'll sit down. Bob?
Well, I asked Lonnie a question earlier today, and he sent me an email, and you're going to have to explain it to me tomorrow, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I promised you, I researched it, and I said you.
It makes sense to you, but.
All right, okay, so we got a resolution, we need, go ahead, Mr. McLung.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we assign a number to this resolution and read it for passage.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Should be a voice, voice for?
It should be resolution.
Should be, all right, yeah, we need to have a voice, sorry.
You mean roll call?
Roll call, yeah, sorry.
Mr. McLung?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? The resolution number will be 686. Resolution amending the 2015 adopted budgets for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the year 2015, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure therein, and for other purposes, whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the adopted budgets of the city, and, whereas certain anticipated revenues and expenditures did not occur as previously budgeted. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Section 1, this resolution shall be known as the Cleanup Amended Budget Resolution for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the year 2015, and the attached 2015 budget documents present the actual revenues, expenditures, and appropriation adjustments for the period. Section 2, that the amounts for each expenditure classification in the amended budget are hereby approved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and they are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes set forth for the calendar year ending December 31, 2015. Revenues for 2015 for the general fund, $4,023,649. Appropriations for the general fund, $4,189,523. Revenues for the street fund, $719,706. Appropriations for the street fund, $735,973. Revenues for lot fee were $259,302, while the appropriations were $208,274. Revenues for the general fund were $93,233, while the appropriations were $614,953. Revenues for the debt service were $1,328,966, while the appropriations were $1,283,582. Revenues for the district court automation were $6,427, while appropriations were $3,994. Revenues for the fireman's pension fund were $105,022, while the appropriations were Revenues for the municipal court retirement were $1,124, while the appropriations were zero. Revenues for 2015 for the water and sewer fund were $1,744,670, while appropriations Revenues for the transit fund, $1,215,018, and appropriations for transit fund were
All right, thank you. Get a motion for discussion on speeding solutions, speeding on East Mountain.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I don't remember when it was, was last council meeting, council meeting before last, we had a lot of citizens come in and talk about speeding up on East Mountain. We had been in discussion with them about various solutions. We've had issues of speeding up there, well, that's come to our attention, at least probably for this, for this year. And we've had people, we've had the police up there sitting and running radar and everything else. The, what I would prefer to do is put speed ramps up there, but unfortunately, speed ramps run about $7,500 apiece to put them in, and I'm talking about the ones that are like out at Greenwood Hall. We have applied for some grants to replace our speed bumps with speed ramps, and we're, that's about a $75,000 grant that we've initiated, for around 10 of them around town. So what we have done, the speed bumps will run somewhere between $500 and $750 apiece, and so we're going to put two speed bumps up there on East Mountain. And one of the reasons we're also putting speed bumps is to let us see if they're in the appropriate spot, because it is a long area, long stretch in through there. And so if we're, with speed bumps, we at least have them able to move, so when we can get the chance to get the money available for speed ramps, then we can be pretty sure that that's where we want to put them. So anyway, that was our solution. Mr. McLung?
And, and I apologize, because I certainly intended to go up there and be specifically look, but I didn't. How is our signage up there?
We've been putting signage up there, and we've moved signage back and forth, so we've had speed.
We have three or four signs along that stretch?
We do. Three, four, four, yeah.
And you're talking about from 62 Highway?
Down to the utility company.
To the, to the, getting where the gas?
Yeah, the gas company, yeah.
Yeah, okay. There, Echo Street.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I was also curious about, how does a camera system work? Cameras that, that take, like, like on a, on an interstate, or on a turnpike or something, whenever they?
Probably work pretty good.
Yeah, I know they work good, because I know people that have gotten tickets like that.
Yeah, it probably just costs.
Sent in the mail.
Probably cost a little bit more money than our speed ramps.
Well, I don't know, I mean, maybe they do, maybe they don't, I don't know.
I don't know, I'll ask Thomas to, about that. We've had, I'll ask about it. We've had a lot of cases with vandalism with some places around areas, and so we've have had putting up, trying to put in some cameras in one or two spots that are being monitored by the police station, the Basin Park being for one, and then we have another one that we're looking at up on East Mountain. And I know they do cost money because of the wireless connection and that type of thing, so I don't know how much, Mickey?
Something to keep in mind, that might, you might want to add extra signage when these ramps go in, these tables. When they put one in over by the new school system, they didn't have any sign saying "speed table," nobody here knew what it was, and they'd go across and all of a sudden drop off this big thing, and they, there was a lot of car damage, and a lot of phone calls. Once they put in the signs stating "go extremely slow, speed table," that was effective, and so you might want to add that, a little bit extra money into the cost.
I'm wondering how much the overlook actually adds to the income to this town, because I'm afraid that that scenic overlook sign is encouraging people to drive that street, and if perhaps that sign were taken down, we might have a lower traffic count on that street.
Most, most of the speeders were local.
Oh, okay.
James?
That was a good point, and I think we are adding to the traffic pattern with those state highway signs. I think we're also experiencing possibly vandalism to the gazebo from people who aren't local, who are maybe just passing through on Highway 62. I think it impacts the community particularly on East Mountain. I think it reduces the quality of their life, having more cars passing by there, and they're going to have more cars in the near future with the development at the end of the point there. It really does nothing to the overall economy of shuttling people through a residential neighborhood, and I often avail myself of scenic overlooks, but I can't remember a scenic overlook that ran through a residential neighborhood to that extent to get to the actual scenic view itself. So I think it is a factor in all of this, because not every non-resident that pulls off on that street is always going to obey the signs. And I just feel that, given the future for that, that we seriously need to consider asking the highway department to take that sign down.
Is that highway department or city highway?
It's highway, yeah.
Oh, we didn't see it today.
I don't think it adds anything, and I think it does impact the neighborhood, and I think it could help.
And I was wondering if maybe we could also add a "know through traffic" sign there.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a lie.
Probably. Mr. McLung?
There are a lot of, excuse me, wedding ceremonies held there, and I'm sure that that sign is a point of reference for people to get there, because a lot of those are, well, most of them are, 99% of them are from out of town, so, you know, I, I don't think it's as impacting as, as the other council people have spoken to, but.
Yeah, but we all got GPS.
That doesn't work in town.
I don't need mine, I don't know.
Yeah, I know we do have a lot of weddings up there.
Yes, there's a lot.
If you, if you do speed bumps and take out the sign at the same time, you really don't know which one's having the impact. If you put the speed bumps in now, and it doesn't, you know, if you're still having a problem, then you can, then you can consider taking, asking the highway department to take out the sign.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I was going to say. If we're going to do the speed bumps, at least do those, wait a period of time, see if there's an impact, and then go to another step. I'd hate to see the sign gone, and there are a lot of weddings up there, and I give directions up there, and the reason is, is a lot of people can get married free up there, to be honest. And, and it's a great place.
It's pretty.
And, you know, you're absolutely correct, having lived up there, it's not, the tourists, the tourists drive slowly to look around, it's the, it's the local people, and the local people are not through traffic, they're coming from, you know, Holiday Island, cutting up through, to get up that way, you know, so even, you couldn't restrict it to local traffic.
James?
It's not a controlled experiment that you're conducting here by putting the speed tables in, and then determining whether or not taking the sign down had any impact on that. That's not an experiment, you'd have to have a double-blind experiment to judge that. The fact of the matter is, it does impact the health, safety, and welfare of the people in that community. You had a number of them talk about walking their dogs, kids, and stuff like that. Every additional car that goes through that neighborhood impacts the people that live on that street, and I don't, I questioned it in my own mind when that sign first went up, and now given where we are with the people on East Mountain, I think the sign needs to come down. I don't think it aids that much as far as a directional sign goes. I think people are capable of finding that through, through standard street signs, and I, I just feel it doesn't aid the community in any way, and it actually impacts the people that live there.
David?
I wholeheartedly disagree with your assessment, and I wasn't going for a double-blind study or anything statistically valid at this point. It's going for just a plain observation, of let the police department put in some speed bumps, and let's see where it goes. Real simple.
Mickey?
You might want to keep in mind that we are a tourist town. We start taking away directions or signage for our various tourist areas, what do we end up being?
James?
We were a town for 150 years before that sign went up, and it's only been up one year, and it could be a very related.
And they've been complaining for years.
Excuse me, it could be a causal factor why the people on East Mountain are up in arms, owing to the fact that that sign has been up there for a year. That increased traffic brought about by that sign could be exacerbating their situations.
Kristy?
I would like to make a motion that we ask the state to remove that sign.
I'll second that motion.
All right, discussion? Mickey?
They've been complaining for a lot longer than one year of one sign. They've been complaining for a lot longer than one year of one sign. I reiterate, we're a tourist town. GPS does not work in the city limits. That has been proven. It is locals. We've had someone living there who says it's locals. I go through the same thing on my street. All of us do, including right here on Main Street. The people who go slow are the visitors. The people who floor it and don't care are the locals because they're familiar and comfortable. We can't keep taking away signs or directions or anything else because the locals want to speed.
David?
I'm going with the police chief. Let's just put the things up. So I'm not going to vote for that.
Let's just give it to the police, let them play.
Have we got any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of having the contact the state to have the sign removed, signify it by saying aye?
Aye.
How many, all those against?
No.
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 Okay, 4-2?
2-4.
2-4, all right. All right. Let's see what happens with the speed bumps and see if that helps any. All right, next item is the amicus brief. Show of support. James?
I was just liking a simple-
Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, second.
All right. Now, there you go.
I was simply liking an amicus brief just to show support with the city of Fayetteville who's being challenged on their anti-discrimination ordinance. It's pretty cut and dry. I don't think we could add anything legalese-wise to aid them in standing up for anti-discrimination. And I think a show of support is in keeping with Fayetteville because we share the same desire to have equality for everybody.
David?
Help me out one more time because I've slept. So, the amicus brief does not tie us in any way legally to the issue. It's just a show of support or is a resolu- Help me with that a little bit, please.
Typically, they're written by nonprofit organizations which are in support of one side or another of a lawsuit.
Okay.
And they typically try to expand on the point of law on that side in which they support. To simply write a simple little something that says we support Fayetteville actually might damage our reputation with the courts.
So would a resolution do the same thing that James was thinking about?
Resolution, I don't think would necessarily damage because the court would not, the brief itself, they would have to study. It would have to be assigned to their law clerks, or law clerks would have to research it. They would have to, the other side would have the ability to respond to it in kind.
So you're saying that-
Yeah, a lot more, a lot more-
Risky?
Yeah.
So it's, a resolution, would resolution do the same thing we want, show support?
I think you could show support that would probably get just as much attention without potentially raising the hackles of the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court. Because most likely, if you do a resolution, given the nature of what you're dealing with, it's going to get more press coverage than an amicus brief because an amicus brief isn't going to be announced to the general public.
And didn't-
A resolution is most likely going to be picked up by the Gazette.
And didn't Fayetteville kind of join us and help us with our issues on nondiscrimination 2223?
They gave us some suggestions. They came over and talked to us.
So they were helping, they were with us?
They were in support.
Yeah. That's what I thought. Thank you. I guess it's back to James.
What's the council want to do? David?
I'll kick it off. I make a motion that we develop a resolution supporting the city of Fayetteville in its efforts towards nondiscrimination ordinances and in the other legal action that they are taking to support diversity.
I'll second that.
No discussion? And all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Good, Mr. Weaver?
All right, next item. Well, going along the line with, and I think what we're talking about here, discussion of need for written resolutions. I think what we're asking, Mr. Thomas, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, we want to discuss the need for making revisions for resolutions.
A combo of the two, yeah.
Because we just did a thing for making a resolution.
We just what now?
We just voted on making a resolution just now.
With regards to what?
For support of Fayetteville.
And that, but how does that impact mine?
You want it written.
I mean, that's how, what this says is discussion of need for written resolutions.
But not related to Fayetteville?
I think he's talking about resolutions in general.
All right, well, go ahead. Go ahead, Jim. Make a motion here for discussion.
Motion to discuss the need for written resolutions.
Okay.
Second.
All right, go for it.
We need, no. I'm still concerned, I'd like to hand out a paper, but the last time I did that, the discussion was over before I finished handing it out. Hold it off for a moment or two. I'm just still concerned.
And Mickey gets one too.
You got that? Oh, Nikki. I just said Nikki.
This says-
Nikki down there.
Robert's Rules.
Have you got more?
No, do we need more?
Nikki needs one.
Yep.
We have a spare.
Pass it to Nikki.
Oh.
Which?
So, the front is Robert's Rules for rescinding or amending or reconsidering something previously adopted. That's not me. I'm not that Robert. This is Robert's Rules of Order. But I'm just, I'm still concerned, not about any particular motion, but about the process for amending a motion and changing a motion. That, you know, it's, we just need to be more formal about how we do it. Then on the backside, there is a resolution that concerned a moratorium. And you can just see how it was formalized in terms of what the council wanted and why they wanted it and, you know, how long it was going to last, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that everybody was clear on what was happening. I think our intent with the resolution on B&amp;Bs was, you know, to clear up language in our code book that was unclear and, you know, was causing some confusion. And we did it with a motion that I think was unclear and could cause confusion. So, you know, it was like compounding the problem.
I think what we were doing was this item number two, the motion to amend something previously adopted.
But we didn't do that. We didn't make a motion. Somebody just stood up and said, oh, I meant so-and-so.
You're absolutely correct.
Right.
But this is what we were supposed to have done. And you're correct, we didn't follow Robert Rules of Orders and that thing. We agreed at the beginning of the year we'd follow Robert Rules of Orders, and unfortunately we didn't at that point. You're correct.
True. But you know what? If you want to apply Robert's Rules of Orders, the time to apply it's when it's not happening and you call it. So at least, because if not, we all sat right here at the table, we all had our intent, we all thought, you know, what was happening. And no, we didn't follow it. And yes, we absolutely should. But if you don't at the time see it happening and say that's, we need to do it this way after the fact is a couple, 4-2, 2, 4 weeks later is a little late. So we're going to have to be Johnny-on-the-spot with doing this, or it's not going to help us at all. And you're right.
James?
Well, if we were using that one in particular, it doesn't follow to any of these three topics. I mean, it was more a clarification than anything else. These others were amending, reconsidering, or rescinding. So that wasn't pertinent to what we were talking about.
Terry?
I'm assuming that under the motion to reconsider, that it can only be made on the day the vote to be reconsidered was taken, or on the next succeeding day, or a legal holiday or recess not being counted as a day. Now, I would, that would be for an organization that was meeting daily. I can't imagine it would be for, like us, it would be our next regular meeting.
That is correct. That's the way we've handled it before.
Yes, okay. Just to make sure that that's understood.
And I think somewhere it's in Robert's Rules of Order, that's what it says, is the next meeting.
Now, the only other thing that I would like to say is that, is that when the minutes are prepared following a meeting, that I think it's our, as the councils, due diligence to read those minutes. And if there is something that's not as we recall it to be, then it needs to be brought up when the minutes are to be approved. I mean, I think that is our, that is our way to follow through with this. And then we rectify it at that time if there is a problem.
Kristi?
I think another concern was whether the, the fact that the resolution wasn't in writing at the time. And I-
It wasn't a resolution. It was just a voice vote here at the table.
It was a motion, it wasn't a resolution. Yeah.
Bob?
I'm not really sure what Mr. McClung was talking about because after the first meeting, when you read the minutes, it said, the minute said exactly what the motion was. The problem was then at the next meeting, the motion was modified or changed.
Clarified.
No, it was not changed. Nothing was changed.
Adding words changes it.
If you say, all, if you say moratorium on B&amp;Bs versus moratorium on new B&amp;Bs, that's a change.
That's not-
We would have had to have voted on any change.
Exactly.
All right. I think we're understanding the confusion, we're getting back into it right now, too. I mean, we had, we asked our city attorney exactly where we were at at that point, too, if I'm not mistaken. We asked the city attorney how to handle that at that time. And what we were doing was clarifying a motion that was done. Somewhere in through here, I think, if anything, it's probably, I mean, it's coming closer to the amending of something, but it wasn't amending it, which is clarification. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Weaver, you said what we were doing was okay.
I still believe what you did was okay. Basically, the council hasn't changed its directive. It's not the council that issues those documents. It's the executive administration. They have to interpret what a council rule is passed. A resolution, a motion, an ordinance is a rule. You gave them further guidance, just as you would with your legislative history, had you argued the issue prior to your vote, of what was the meaning of your vote. Now, if you want to go back and change it and put the word "new" in there, then yes, you need to follow rule number two. But you're not putting the word "new" in there. You said, and Mr. DeVito said, we're interpreting or helping to interpret. And then the executive has to apply that, the executive branch of the government. The idea of having multiple branches of government is you pass the law, they interpret it and apply it, or a court interprets it in a three-system. We don't have a three-system here. We have a two-system, basically.
Well, what happens if they interpret it the wrong way from what was meant?
Same thing as the state legislature would do if you interpreted it the wrong, if you were the governor. They go out and pass a new law.
So it's easier to do it at our meeting, make it clear.
Next meeting, you would pass a new law.
Or a new motion.
After the fact.
A new motion. A new ordinance, a new resolution. Whatever they didn't follow.
After the fact.
All right, Anne?
Two things. I was really grateful that you did clarify what you meant because the next day when the phone started ringing, I couldn't give the public and the people who had property for sale accurate information. It would have been an attempt to read your mind, which I'm not interested in doing.
Don't go there.
And the second thing is that, one of the reasons I put, when I send out the draft minutes, please phone or email if you have questions. Because if you do read the minutes and you believe that something happened, I'm happy to go back and review it and see if I inadvertently said something differently than what truly happened. And I would much prefer to make sure the minutes are accurate before they come to the table because so much time can be wasted. So please do let me know, not necessarily at the next meeting, but if you think that something's in those minutes that is not an accurate reflection of what happened, email or call. I'm happy to go back and listen to it as many times as it takes.
All right, any further discussion? Bob?
I'm, now you're- I'm feeling like this reference to the minutes and calling attention to an error in the minutes is sort of like coming back on me that I didn't read the minutes. I read the minutes. Your minute said exactly what was said at the first meeting. I had no problem with the minutes. My problem was with the second meeting. So bringing in the minutes, I think, has kind of confused the issue and sort of put me in a bad spot that I didn't read the minutes and the minutes have nothing to do with this.
Okay. All right. So there's nothing else, let's go on to item number five. Get a motion to discuss.
So moved. We need to ask Jerry to come in.
Set this up for us. Set this up, set him up.
Well, I'm trying to, but he's not paying attention.
Oh.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I do a lead-in?
Yes.
Okay. At the last meeting, you were asked about the possibility of solar power for the sewer plant in regards to that off-time use. And your comment was you would love to do solar, except it was in the valley with trees. The very next day, I hit Jerry up. He and I had the same idea, but he and I both have been working on solar for a long time. Him being the expert, me being the wannabe. Solar, in regards to city, does not have to be put, like, on the roof of the building, which is actually the way so many people, my husband included, think that in order to use solar power, it's got to be attached to your house or your building, your business, whatever. There are a ton of different ways of hooking up solar. And that's what Jerry is going to be presenting, is information on how we can not only have solar working for the sewer plant for this off-time period, but also how it will benefit the city in regards to our electra bill from both power companies. Is that all you need, Jerry, to start out?
That's good.
Okay, go for it.
I'm Jerry Landrum. I appreciate everything you guys do to make this such a great and fun place to live. Thank you so much. On the handout, I've got just sort of a fact sheet there on the front. And behind that, a little brochure on the opportunities for community share of solar here in Eureka Springs. I'd like to thank Sandy Martin for helping me to put that together. Behind that, I have a energy production sheet showing the, our first community share of solar. They've produced over 30 megawatt-hours of the electricity there, and the economics of it are working out really, really good. And they've saved over 45,000 tons of CO2 going into the air, and that CO2 is killing the planet. Then I've got a little sheet on this Arkansas Advanced Energy Equity Program. This was that Property Assess Clean Energy bill that passed in the state to allow financing of energy improvements in solar energy to be added onto a property assessment, and those payments made through the payments on the taxes. And that's something that we could, through an ordinance or resolution, possibly add Eureka Springs into that PACE financing. I think that'd be fairly simple, so it's something you could think about. And the last sheet is just a little state of the climate thing. The records keep getting broken. 2014 was the hottest year ever until 2015. So there's very good reasons to think about repowering. So back to the first sheet here, I'd like to go through some of these facts with you. Number one, the city's Climate Action Plan, which was unanimously adopted by council, calls for 2.5 megawatts of solar power to be installed over a period of time. Thank you to the city for providing the copies of the electric bills for June, and they are substantial. There's 14 services with Carroll Electric, 56 megawatt-hours, $6,000. With Swebco, there are 19 services. In June, it was 17 megawatt-hours, over $2,000. So it was about $8,000 a month drain on the city of paying these electric bills. The Arkansas does, as Mickey said, allow this aggregate net metering. Carroll Electric, I understand, restricts you to four meters, but that's not in the net billing law. I looked today, so that may be negotiable. The average cost, of course, there's an economy of scale that residential, the U.S. average is a little over $3 a watt. For commercial, a little over $2. And for large-scale utility projects, less than $2 a watt. Using the expected 4% escalation of utility rates, which was a number used in the Climate Action Plan, you can do a commercial scale system with no tax breaks, no incentives of any kind, and have a return of a little over 7% with a simple payback of 13 years. And you get back twice your money over the expected 25-year life. And there are some incentives available, but not a whole lot in the way of grants that I could find, but possibly some financing on that website. Some of the sites that we thought might be suitable are illustrated on this, if you can see this here, a couple of sites that are on the Swebco line were the transit stations at the top of Plainer Hill and on West Van Huron. And my friend Lisa Whiplinger, who also is a structural engineer, she took over the National Water Center from Barbara Harmony, and she put this together. And you can Google solar parking shades and come up with your own pictures of things that you might like somewhere. But this is something she's showing in front of the Echo Drift Store here, and it's the furniture store here. Their Echo Clinic is planning an expansion on their solar system to double it this summer. So that's that. Some other pictures of ideas, things that she saw, or she thought might look good. Here's one here that shows some solar panels up over the, we're missing the brown frothy part here, but that's covered up. But that's our sewer plant and what it would look like with solar panels on it. And another site is for a community shared system also, is at the Community Center. And you see our old high school here, and, you know, there's one idea there. And then this is at the transit park and area on Plainer Hill. And I'd like to try to answer any questions that you might have.
About solar energy in Eureka Springs.
David?
I don't think I have any questions, Jerry, because, I mean, the concept of solar is the concept of everything about Eureka Springs, from a green, a tree city, a bee city, a place in the mountains to live. It just goes, Eureka and solar seem to be a great marriage. So the only thing left that my concern would be, would be the cost-benefit analysis as we look at solar compared to, say, putting a generator and having to buy fuel and mechanically keep it up for the sewer plant compared to solar and something like that. But as far as the concept of solar, I don't see a negative to it, especially if it comes out that there is a way to make it financially viable. So that was just a comment to you.
James? Tax credits. Were they renewed this year?
Yes.
Does that apply to municipalities, or is that just for individual consumers?
I think we're nonprofit, so there's no tax credit. Individual's residential, it's a 30% tax credit, and that really does improve the economics. The commercial investment tax credit is also now still 30%, but I understand it's going to be reduced to 10% at some point.
I had asked Lonnie to check and see if, as a nonprofit government entity, if we could sell the tax credit, because a lot of places do that, and we can't find any way that we can do that.
Damn.
Yeah. And, yeah, I mean, we may still, it may be, you know, maybe have some creative financing involved somehow, but, you know, maybe somebody builds it for us and then we lease it back or something in through there.
Like the Community Center, that's a non...
Well, they're still not...
No, that's a nonprofit, too.
Yeah.
But you are correct. It's very common for tax credits, for nonprofits, to use, to sell tax credits in order to raise money to fund their project, and it's done commonly with historic tax credits and low-income housing tax credits, so.
So I would think the same thing would be true with solar. Now, my question, of course, two projects that we're looking at, it's the new maintenance building, of course, and seeing how much that's going to increase our costs. And we're still working on trying to get the final figures on that for the council. And then I asked Jerry to look at the sewer treatment plant, and I've also asked another, and Jerry, I don't know whether you can actually give us a cost of $50,000 for installation, and it will pay us back in five years, 10 years, or if you're capable of doing that.
Yes, I think I could work that up for you. I did go out there, I got there at 9:30 the other morning, and the sun was up over the horizon. You'd asked me to look at that, what would be the penalty of being down in the valley there. I estimate that at around 10% to 15%.
Of course, this is midsummer, too, so that's the highest solar energy in the summertime. The horizon's going to be a lot less. Yeah, I mean, we need to look at it for a full year, because in the summertime, the horizon's going to be 15 degrees lower than the horizon, the sun.
Down towards the south. I think it's going to be...
It's going to rise 15 degrees, if my memory is right, approximately 15 degrees south of east, and then it's going to be about 15 degrees lower also. And then it's going to set 15 degrees south of west, so you've got a shorter daylight period.
It gets complicated.
Yep.
But 10% to 15% is my calculation, measurement estimate so far. That's about a, I think we could get about 20 kilowatts on that sewer plant. And you kind of have to go through, actually, a design of, you know, what can you do with putting up framing over that area, versus what would it cost to lease or purchase an acre or two, say, up on top of the mountain, where you would have, you know, 100% of your power. And then you would add another meter service in under the city's name, and then aggregate net meter against your other meters. So you could set up a new service in another location to push power into the grid that would be metered and...
Credit it back.
Netted against your other bills. So it doesn't have to go on the sewer plant, and there may be some reasons there. Maybe Dwayne would know, is sunlight hitting those lagoons? Is that part of the treatment process, for instance?
I think so.
Be some technical issues. But we can do an analysis of putting it on the sewer plant versus putting it somewhere else and going that way.
Makes more sense to go with an optimum site and feed it back into the grid than to try and make a less than favorable site work.
Yeah. And you could expand it over time.
Because are they required to purchase energy generated? I know some states are kind of...
Up to a point, I think.
Making that difficult to put back into the grid. I mean, that's still, we can still do that in Arkansas?
We can. There was an act passed last year, Act 827, that is, that asked the Public Service Commission to review the net metering policy, and they have a docket open now to do that. So we do have the net metering and the aggregate net metering now. We have unlimited carryover at the end of two years. It's optional, whether you want to sell any excess production back. But I don't see the city becoming a net power producer.
Power provider, no.
Not for a while.
Mickey?
See, when you made your comment, that's what triggered me to go and talk to Jerry, for being a tree city, USA. It's amazing how many places around town we have open skies that we could put these panels up to feed into our grid. I mean, it's absolutely incredible how many different places we have. And that's what's awesome, because we could take care of an awful lot of our electric bill by doing this. It'll cost out-of-pocket money to start, but it pays off so quickly. And the biggest part is, after that, it's all profit.
Terry?
I just have one question for Mickey there. Who owns these properties?
A lot from our city. And others, we would just get a lease or something. The one property I think George's own, you know what the train station is and the parking lot across, that very top level, do you still own that? Okay, and it's never been used or anything. I taught my boys how to drive up there. That would be one of the most perfect places. So we can always lease the property or buy it. Nothing's done there. They'd probably let us have it reasonably. But there's so many places that the city has. And I know, we've talked for years about putting solar up on top of the auditorium and on top of this building, but we don't own this one. But that's been talked about, and, you know, it's something to really think about. Jerry's got really good places in mind, but like, in the long run, this takes care of our power bill.
David?
And it does, and it's great. And what Jerry's doing, has done and is doing is great. But it goes back to the bottom line. We just made an amendment in our budget here to change it around, and then obviously we have to spend money to save money. And right now, I'm pretty sure that we're not flush with money to jump into the solar business, but we certainly should be exploring it and comparing it to everything else as we go along, and trying very hard to move that direction, philosophically, that's the way we're going. But we certainly need to start out, pick a project or something that we can start with and start moving that direction and have it as a goal. So whether we put it up and meter into the whole grid for everything, which is probably a great idea, especially if we expanded on it and kept feeding into the grid, and hopefully the state wouldn't limit us in that ability, or do we just focus right now on trying to figure out the expansion on the sewer plant? Because we know we're moving towards the direction of hopefully getting a revenue source coming in to help us with that particular issue down there as far as the sewer plant with chemicals and labs and taking care of a lot of problem down there. So do we start small with solar and focus on that, or do we start with solar and focus on the grid? I don't know.
Thank you.
Jerry, could you give us in a nutshell an explanation of PACE, how they work or whatever, and what we might have to do to get them here, or to get approved by them, whatever?
Property Assess Clean Energy was approved by the legislature a year or two ago, and you set up energy improvement districts, and there is one that was set up in Fayetteville, and Pulaski County recently became part of that. And with agreement and an enabling city ordinance, it's my understanding that we could join into that, and it has, it's got a board of directors, and I think it's completely on the up and up. And the overhead associated with it is very modest. The lenders are comfortable with it because it becomes part of your tax assessment, so there's no way that it can be defaulted on, the property, you know, would be sold. So in a nutshell, that's what it does, and it provides commercial project financing. As I understand it now, it would not, I don't think it would be for government, and I don't think it would be for residential.
So the city could or could not do it?
I don't think that the city could, but some of the businesses in the city could.
Okay, so businesses could, but not residents and not city.
Right.
That's the problem.
That's my understanding.
That's the problem. Okay.
Terry?
I think this is all well and good, and, you know, we're trying to, the motion here was, or the discussions to be about solar grant options, and I've not heard anything about that. So, you know, I think, but I think this is all something that the mayor's office can certainly look into as we progress with everything and, you know, and things fall in place, and then we can get more aggressive with it. But, you know, right now, it's just premature for us, I do believe.
Are there, are you aware of grants available for municipalities?
I haven't looked at everything.
Okay. But we can look into it, continue on. And we are, you know, investigating the use of solar, and I've got another, the electrician here in town's looking at our electrical for the new maintenance building, and we've got it set up, and Jerry helped us with coming up with some estimates on the number of panels we need out there. So the problem is trying to find the largeness... So, uh, the problem is trying to find a large enough space. The community center would be probably a great spot for future solar parking, covered parking type thing, uh, so we could develop a net grid when that happens. Uh, and at that point, we might be able to look into, you know, seeing what it would cost to develop it at that point, once we get that, when that gets there. Uh, the other problem is, citywide, we don't have a large area of parking available, like, uh, but I'll also talk to, uh, to our transit people. The problem we have with the transit, uh, it, it really belongs to the federal government. It's not the city property. So I don't know where the feds come into play when we do stuff like that. But I'll ask on that. And there may be some, some, um, available money for, from the feds to help us with the transit, to put up solar. I don't know. I'll ask and find out. So it's a great concept, and see where we can go with it. And we've been committed with it through our, um, energy system, energy power anyway. All right, anybody else?
Do you have any more, Jerry?
No, that's it. Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, um, all right, that ends the new business, uh, unfinished business. Mr. Weaver, the ordinance to vacate a portion of Hickory Street. Where are we on that one?
Uh, the abstract company and I are needing to sit down and compare a map yet because we were not given a direct survey, we were given legal descriptions, and Mr. Epley has been kind enough to try to draft those out so that we can see them and make sure we have the right descriptions for the water. Okay. So we're still just a little delayed on that. All right.
Mr. Weaver? Was, all right, is, is this what you're provided by Mr. Gerken?
Yes.
And so they were not surveyed?
They are from a surveyor, they're legal descriptions, but they are not the actual drawings.
There's no graph?
There's no graph, there's no, no, no diagram to look at to see if it's what we really are looking at.
Should we not get Mr. Gerken to have that-
Well-
...surveyor to provide that? Because all they have to do is plug that into their program and it prints it.
Um, Mr. Epley said he would try to do that himself, or has tried to do that himself through his title abstract company up here. But yes, if we could get Mr. Gerken to do it, it would be a lot quicker. We'd, we'd be able to look at it and know we had what we needed.
I thought we had, had a survey of that showing the area-
Not, not breaking out each of the little pieces. It's just of the general area.
I think that the production of a survey should be the responsibility of a person asking for a vacation. It should not be our responsibility to try to put it together. And generally, the programs that title companies have as far as plotting out surveys are not really quite as accurate as what a survey, surveyor has.
I wonder if Mr. Gerken knows exactly what we need.
I don't think he necessarily understands what we're looking for. And then I know that Mr. Epley had been in contact, from what I understand, with the surveyor himself and tried to get it from the surveyor, but was having difficulty doing that.
Mr. McClan?
Can I ask who the surveyor is?
Uh-
Gerald Farmer. Carol?
I mean, it's, it's, it's all a question of, he'll produce a plan if somebody paying for it. If he's, if, if, if he shot coordinates-
He shot the coordinates, and he drew the plan, drew the, the original survey that we all looked at. I'm still confused about what, because I thought we showed the, the diagram, showed the site.
What, what we've been presented with are handwritten legal descriptions.
Are those legal descriptions produced by a surveyor or by the landowner?
They are supposedly produced by the surveyor. They have marks indicating that they were done by the surveyor.
It shouldn't cost very much money to produce the graph.
It, it's not what I'm used to seeing, it's what we were used to seeing 30 years ago.
I, I suggest that contact be made with Mr. Gerken and tell him we need, you know, we, we need, we need whoever the surveyor is to provide us the plat so we, so we're sure that it's, that it's, you know, that it closes, that the property is what it's supposed to be. And I, I think that's something you can do administratively. I don't think it's something we need to vote on.
Okay, if there could be a three-way between you, that would really be good, because I've had several discussions with Mr. Gerken, and his understanding is quite different. So if you were able-
He thinks he's already given us everything we need. Is that right?
It would be really good for you to have a conversation with him. I'm not gonna, this is, this is really awkward. He has a different perception than you have, than you have, than you have. So if you were collectively able to speak with him and come to an agreement, uh, he would probably be able to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, if I can come down to your office and we could get him on a speaker phone and we could talk to Jim and-
Sure, why don't you do that?
-forget him to come in. I'd be happy to participate in that.
Thank you.
Uh, how about Thursday?
Sure.
Okay, Thursday, yeah. Uh, we got it tomorrow and Wednesday, I'm gonna be tied up, yeah, Thursday, I think.
I, I will be happy to lend in the assistance as well.
We can get it taken care of. I, I'm, you know, once we get it, uh, Jim was, I'm sure a little confused.
Getting it to understand, it's, it's not gonna be a problem.
Uh, I'm gonna make sure we're, okay, I'm Thursday. Uh, yep. Uh, I'll holler at you and we'll get together. Okay.
We'll be fine.
All right. Uh, okay, going on to our second order of business, uh, ordinance 2244, the 1% sales tax amendment in the third reading.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Mr. Weaver, you were gonna contact, uh-
I sent both of the ordinances, this one and the one you're gonna look at a little bit, to the municipal league, to their person who is, who I was referred to, uh, and he is one of their attorneys, and his was, he said it looked good to him.
No change.
There are changes to each one. Section 2 has been added to each one that reflects your request for a 10-year deadline to shut them down.
Just, just sections 2, because we've already read it twice.
Yes.
So we need, we would need to do amendments for section 2.
You would need to do an amendment to add section 2 if you still-
I didn't think I had a copy of one of the, yeah.
It was in the-
I, I am also concerned that it does not include the word improvements on the, on the, uh, third line of section 5.
Which ordinance are you talking to?
Uh, this would be ordinance 2220, uh, 2244.
Okay.
I didn't get that one. I don't necessarily-
I've got an extra one here, so.
I don't necessarily need it.
I had an extra one, I don't know where I put it.
Did you make some, did you make some new changes in yours?
Only to section 2.
Okay. Christie, where was the, where would the word improvements go?
Um, I, it would go to fund the city's water and sewer infrastructure improvements, maintenance, repairs, and operation.
Improvements, okay.
Okay.
Just on 2244?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Klun, did you get a copy?
Yes, I did. And tell me again where that is.
Uh, the second to the last line-
Section 5?
On the first page of ordinance number 2244. I would recommend that it read infrastructures improvements, maintenance, repairs, and operation. I believe that allows a broader range of expenditures.
I would like to make an amendment to ordinance number 2244. Section 2, that said tax shall be collected for a period of 10 years from the first date of collection unless otherwise renewed by proper means and vote. The termination shall be automatic without the necessity of any action by the city other than proper notification to the collectors and state agencies as may be required by Arkansas Code annotated. And, pardon?
Oh, I seconded.
Oh, um, should I have two amendments, or should I include the word improvement in the section 5? Can that be included in the one amendment?
Mr. Weaver?
I think you probably can make it in the same motion, but I would suggest if you're also wanting to expand, you may want to place it also after the word auditorium in that same paragraph, because it's also limiting-
Oh, yes, you're right.
And amending section 5 to include the words improvement after auditoriums so that, and, uh, city's water and sewer infrastructures, so that section 5 will read that the revenue raised from the tax shall be used to fund the city auditorium's improvements, maintenance, repair, and operation amount equal to 1/4 of the revenue, and to fund the city's water and sewer infrastructure's improvements, maintenance, repairs, and operation in amount equal to 3/4 of the revenue.
Second.
Barely seconded.
Were you turning?
Mr. Early.
Really? Mitch McClan?
Um, no, I was saying-
I seconded, you seconded.
It's followed by a comma, because it's separate.
In both cases.
Why inflicted a comma in there?
I don't think I, I just made sure that they included the comma.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Let's vote on the, uh, the amendment. Do we need a voice? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
You mean roll call?
Roll call.
Uh, roll call.
Okay.
Sorry, that's it, voice.
I was, I was waiting for a voice. Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
6-0.
Okay. Ms. DeVito?
I'll move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2244 on its third reading as amended.
Second. Discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
6-0. And ordinance providing for the levy of a 1% sales and use tax within the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, declaring that an emergency exists and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
James?
Move to approve ordinance number 2244 on its third reading.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Oh, there is.
6-0.
James?
Um, I'd move to invoke the emergency clause. Second.
Discussion? Bob?
Yeah, I just, would somebody define the emergency for me? Is the emergency, because we did not do this on a timely basis to get it to the-
It cuts the 30 days off.
Pardon?
Cuts off the 30 days of waiting.
It, it takes 30 days. If we wait right now, it'll be 30 days for it to be approved, and they'll put it September 8th, and that's, uh, is that, that's past the deadline for-
The county clerk wanted it in, in the middle of August, didn't she? Yeah.
She wanted it in the middle of August.
Yeah, the emergency clause cuts off the 30 days.
So they, the county-
Emergency is because they changed the date that they had to have-
Because they need it now.
No. No.
No. They need it now. The emergency is 30 days.
I don't, I'm getting two different answers there.
Mr. McClan?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, Bob, it's, we need this one right now so we can do the next one right now, because it's the one that's, that is on the timeline.
I understand that.
So, well, we can't, we, if we don't do the 30, do the emergency clause on this one, then we have to wait on this one.
Right.
So we need to do this and then do that one, 30, on, with, on emergency clause as well.
I understand the need, I understand the emergency at this point in time, okay? My question is, could we have avoided an emergency had we started two months ago? That's all I want to know. So it's a ma, it's a council-made emergency.
It's, and, and it's, unless you understand and have a good background on elections like I do, you don't understand how many months ahead.
Oh, I understand that.
You have to have some, and that was our problem. We weren't considering how many months ahead we had to have it.
So it was our fault that we weren't aware of the schedule?
Because of lack of knowledge and experience.
Mr. Weaver?
I would suggest council also take into consideration, when it's considering the emergency, the fact that the tax itself, if approved by the population, will not take effect until nearly the middle of next year, if you can get it on this ballot, because it will not go into effect immediately upon passage. It has several steps it then has to go through at the state level before the tax is collected, and you're probably looking at next fall before any of this is actually returned to a city coffin.
Mr. McClan?
I just also want to state that, that I take offense in that, uh, Bob, and that, that, that we have worked very hard to try and get this done, because this is not an easy decision to make, raising the taxes on the people here. You know, I don't want to have to pay it either. So it's, you know, it's with a lot of real concern for the community that this is done in the first place. And to think that, that we have delayed something frivolously and, I, I don't like that.
Well, I, I-
I take offense.
I understand the implication that I was considering it to be frivolous. I, I didn't mean that at all.
Well, that's the way you made it sound, like, like we dilly-dallyed, and we did not dilly-dally, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Now we're on.
But as the, as the attorney pointed out, this is an academic exercise, because it will take a vote of the people in November. So anything we do here at the table has no force of law behind it. It is the will of the people in November that will have the force of law behind it.
We just set it up for November.
We are on time constraints to get it before-
All right, anybody else? All right, um, motion for approval of, of the emergency clause?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yeah.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
6-0.
All right, thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
Emergency clause, section 6. It is hereby ascertained and declared that there is great need to establish a stable source of revenue to finance vital municipal services in order to promote and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city and its inhabitants, particularly in regards to water and sewer operations within Eureka Springs, Arkansas. It is therefore declared that an emergency exists, and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety, shall be in force and take effect immediately from and after the first day of its approval by the city council.
Okay.
James, a question for the attorney?
Yes.
Uh, my first motion is, that's ordinance 2245.
Sorry.
Um, what has been added besides section 2? Is that, is that it?
As to this next order, 2245? Yes, just section 2.
Okay. I'll make an amend, uh, I'll make a motion to amend ordinance number 2245 reflecting-
Wait a minute, did we finish 44?
Yes, yes, we did. You voted. Try to keep up here, Mickey.
Wait, don't you have to sign it before we can go on for the next one? Because even though we did the emergency, does that not call for your signature?
I don't think so. I've never done that, never seen it done before.
Ordinance number-
Well, we've never had the back to back. I thought you had to sign it to make it effective.
Gosh, I thought I had four.
It will take effect upon him signing it, but if he signs this one second behind it, it will take effect right behind it.
What I'm saying is, does he need to sign it before we can start doing-
Yeah.
That, okay, that's what I was asking. Sorry, James?
Just need to sign them in the right order.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, motion to amend ordinance number 2245 reflecting section 2- The termination shall be automatic without the necessity of any action by the city other than proper notification to the collectors and state agencies as may be required by Arkansas Code annotated.
Second.
Mr. Weaver? I would also recommend at this time that you fill in the blank if you intend to vote this tonight, that is in section one with the proper date, which would be today.
Can he add to his motion and put that date in there? Does he have to make another amendment from, uh, August?
Uh, we're still, I'm still talking.
Oh, thank you.
And in addition, uh, section one, uh, in the blank provided for the date, the date being eight-eight-sixteen.
All right.
Now all second?
Yes, ma'am. Now we got a discussion?
God, no.
Okay, no further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six-zero.
All right, James?
I move to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number twenty-two forty-five on its third, ordinance twenty-two forty-five as amended on its third reading by title only.
Second. Discussion? No discussion, roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, six-zero. Ordinance number two-two-four-five, an ordinance calling for special election to refer the issue of levying 1% sales and use tax within the city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to the voters of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for their acceptance or rejection, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
James?
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-two forty-five on its third reading.
Second. Discussion? Been no discussion, roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah.
Six-zero.
James?
Vote to invoke the emergency clause.
Second. Discussion? Bob?
Yeah, I would just like to apologize to the citizens for the fact that I was not aware of all of the deadlines, and I did not get this done on a timely basis, so I am now going to have to make it an emergency. I'm sorry for that.
Any further discussion, David?
Just a, a particular comment, uh, not about that issue, because I think it's, never mind. Uh, I just want to be sure that, that you, the mayor's office and, and council has a plan of communicating the, the details of this tax increase to the public, so that the public is always informed of, of the actual data and the actual impact. And we were supposed to get some numbers between the, what might happen if the water sewer had to go up, and there were some other details. And I guess I would call it a rollout marketing plan that, that supports the, the reason why we're asking for this increase. And I don't think it needs to be hashed out here at council or anything. I think we, we've obviously, we'll leave that to your office, Mayor, uh, to do. It's just, I would like the public and everybody to know that we definitely do not want this to be warped into something that it's not, and we want the public to have the accurate, factual data when they vote.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, we've got a motion to invoke the emergency clause?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six-zero. Okay. Emergency clause, section six. Since it is necessary to quickly address this issue and to promote economic thrift by the city for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and approval.
All right. Uh, all right, that brings us down to agenda setting. Anyone have anything for the next, uh, meeting? James?
I would like to, uh, put an item on the agenda to outlaw smoking in city parks.
All city parks?
All city parks.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any other? Okay.
Just the, the food truck, that automatically comes back to the agenda. We don't add that, correct?
Yeah, I'll get to that here in a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. That's okay. Um, city council comments? Bob?
Nope.
Mr. McClung?
Um, yeah, just, uh, looking forward to the Kate Brothers this next Saturday at the park, five o'clock. Uh, I'm sure you'll mention that as well, and, and it's always safe to have, always great to have them here. I'm not trying to steal your thunder, Mr. Mayor. And then, uh, also, uh, just to let people know that, and I'm doing this now because, uh, September, the, uh, the, the Jazz Weekend, uh, Dave Brubeck's boys, uh, will be here, the Brubeck Quartet, for the Saturday night show. Um, they're $30 a ticket, but there's a local's discount if you ask for it. Uh, so it's $20, it's general admission. The best $20 you ever, ever spend. True. Uh, I recommend it, recommend it highly. It's going to be a lot of fun.
That sounds good. Thank you. James?
No comment.
David?
I'd like to welcome Ms. Kendrick's to the table, uh, and, uh, her background and expertise is appreciated. Welcome to the moderately dysfunctional group.
Moderately?
Well, maybe not in Mickey's case.
We've had more people sign up in advance than we've ever had before. Uh, this year, there will be a little added something to the final day on Sunday, when they give out all the trophies for the people who've actually made the Eureka, which in this weather includes a hundred-mile bicycle race. Um, I will be doing a donation to the disabled American veterans from the sale of my race day energy bars that I supply the racers with every Saturday of the year. Um, they've been clamoring for my private recipe, so I finally decided they can buy it for Christ. And all donations go to the DAV. So that, I think that'll be a real nice little addition. Um, warning all drunk drivers, stay away from me on Main Street. You don't want to be there. Other than that, uh, it's going to be busy. The race will hopefully be done before the park thing at five o'clock. I hope so. It usually is. Just be careful, there's going to be a lot of races out there. They're going to be hot and tired. That's it.
Thank you. Christie, you got it?
Yes, I just would like to say that I look forward to looking, to working with all members of the council, and the mayor, and the mayor's office, and the city clerk, and, um, that I look forward to serving the citizens of Eureka Springs, and to hearing their comments.
Thank you. All right. Um, we had a workshop on food courts, uh, earlier before this council meeting. Uh, we came up with, uh, after quite a bit of discussion, some, um, things adding and deleting, and, and what I'm going to try to do is get an ordinance prepared to bring to the table for discussion, probably at another workshop, once I get the ordinance ready, so we can talk about it at a workshop instead of, uh, and I don't know when that will be, between myself and Mr. Weaver, how long that will take, but we'll try to get it as soon as possible. Um, we have, uh, in relation to, uh, Mr. Mitchell's talking about the sales tax, we've been working on, uh, putting out, trying to put out information. I've been talking to, uh, citizens, uh, various citizens about the reason why, and where we are, and how we got there. We've already put out a packet that I gave to the council members on how we got there, you know, got to where we are. A lot of people seem to think that, um, we have a lot of waste in government, and I'm not saying that we don't have a lot of waste and a lot of government, but I think the city council and the city has probably narrowed down the waste where we have very little waste in our city government. I think we're operating about as efficient, efficiently as we possibly can, uh, and that includes, uh, all departments. It's unfortunate that we've had some, um, construction with our, our sewer plant that went over the budget, and we've been, uh, working with that for about ten years, twelve years, um, and still trying to play with that. And so we're, now where we're at, spending between $500 and $700,000 a year on bond issues for the refinancing on the sewer plant, and taking money out of our capital funds, and trying to figure out a way to do that. And the, one of the solutions that I came up with, and the council seemed to agree, is a sales tax. And we'll be going ahead and, and getting that on out to the public. Um, this isn't something that's going to be paying for new employees, for buying, uh, new, you know, uh, new fire trucks, buying new buildings for the city, or, uh, we're trying to do this in a method that we will be spending the money that will hopefully be able to, um, do some options similar to what we're talking about, uh, with the solar energy, where we can save money and have more efficient and less operating costs in the future for the sewer plant and for the city. So anyway, uh, we'll continue on with that. Uh, the, and speaking of, of fire departments, today I went ahead and made Nick Samak, who's, who's here, our full-time fire chief, appointed him permanent fire chief. Nick comes with a lot of experience, he's been familiar with this community for a long time, and especially with our ambulance and EMTs, where we've been having, as we all know, some other issues in our, uh, funding and in our revenue streams, and I think Nick's already brought up some cost savings that, uh, available to us, not only in the ambulance, but also in the, in the fire department. Uh, so I'm real excited to have Nick here. He's, he's a, a team player, and I think he's going to be working with us to be able to make the fire department and our ambulance system much more efficient and operable. And so, Nick, you want to?
Thank you.
Say a few words?
Thank you, council members. I look forward to continuing serving this town that I love. Uh, I went to high school here, and, uh, it's nice to get the hometown kids, uh, rising up in the ranks in the fire service, so we, uh, intend on keeping the quality of service that we always have, and, uh, going to continue to do good things, so, thank you. I look forward to meeting with all of you individually, so, if you guys ever have any questions, you got my calls.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. You're a good man. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right.
Especially considering the three of us have known you since you were a kid.
Yeah, I know.
That makes you feel good. Congratulations. Nice to meet you, Dan.
You should.
All right. Nick just was doing a EMT, uh, training session, so I'm not sure if you got through or not, but.
No, we're not done until 10:00.
Oh, okay, so, they, they started at 6:00, and so you took a break. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah. Um, that's kind of the big announcement, but, uh, we do have a lot of events coming up. Terry already took the thunder, uh, with the Kate Brothers. That's okay, we need to repeat that. It's, uh, you know, the Kate Brothers, and this is one of our local groups. I mean, we got, uh, a local sax player, Dave, playing in there, and, and the Kate Brothers are just like hometown people, and, and the park will probably be full. So you need to be there from 5:00 to 7:00 in the Basin Park, compliments of the CAPC. Uh, so we have them to thank for this, uh, the entertainment on there. And I'm sure it's more for our local people more than the, uh, the visitors, but the visitors will, will certainly get a, be entertained by that. Um, also, this weekend, as Mickey's noted too, is the Eureka, a triathlon event, uh, running, bicycling, and swimming, although not necessarily in that order. Uh, but it's a two-day event.
Three-day.
Three-day event. Um, and we always have a lot of people in town, so this is a big, big event for Eureka Springs. I'm real proud of us being able to host it. Um, we will be having the, uh, the parking lot shut down over here, so people don't get excited. That will just mean more people out on the street, walking the streets.
And as soon as we break down, even though we paid for it for the day, it is open to everybody. And on Sunday, that'll be especially true, because we'll be out of there like by noon.
Yep.
And so it's paid for, so you have to pay to park.
Uh, Terry also, he's, I'm going to have to get Terry for the announcements here. Uh, the blues.
I'm Ed McMahon, I'll be Ed.
Oh, good.